Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. At six P M. Meeting was called to order by Gary Bartel at six P M. Attendees tonight, Gary Bartel, counselor Derek Bartel, counselor Clint Johnson, counselor. Colin Eisner Foreman and Trevor Woke, C A O. Absent with notice, Reeve Larry Mahalchuk. Counselor Leanne Hutman is attending virtually. Absent with notice, counselor Ken Reader, absent with notice, counselor Gail Wagner. Absent with notice is the fire chief Ken Mally. And absent with notice, bylaw officer Dale Rose. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Derek moved. Clint seconded. All in favor? That is carried. Welcome to you guys in the gallery too tonight. Nice to see you. Okay, we're on to resolution for the agenda. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? Anything we want to take off? Or add it, yes, for that matter. It all looks well. You're good with it, Leanne?
Yeah, I think it'll look good. I sent in my things on the weekend there by email, so yeah.
Okay. Resolution zero two eight. Be it resolved, the meeting agenda for the regular council meeting, council meeting of January twenty first, twenty twenty five be accepted and approved as presented. A mover and a second or please. Clint moved. Leanne?
Sure, I can second.
Okay. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, we have the meeting minutes here. For the January seventh, twenty twenty five meeting. That was a regular meeting of council. Everybody have a chance to go through them? Derek?
Yeah, I'm good.
Nothing there out of the ordinary? Okay. Resolution zero twenty nine. Be it resolved, the meeting minutes of the regular council meeting on January seventh, twenty twenty five be accepted and approved as amended. Moved by? Derek? Seconder? Clint? All in favor? That is carried. Okay, next we have the meeting minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on January ninth, twenty twenty five. How did things look on that one, everybody? Good Clint? Derek, Leanne? Anything from the committee of the whole meeting?
Uh, just the, it says attended. Maybe mine should say that it was virtually, but I'm not sure.
Oh, I could add that. Add virtual?
Yeah.
Okay. So for both committee of the halls or just was it the one I can't recall? Did you? Which?
One on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Oh, the fourteenth one, okay. This was the ninth, so we will add that to the next resolution for the fourteenth and Leanne.
Sorry.
Nope, I will change it here. When you guys approve the minutes, it'll be with the amendment. I'm just gonna type that in, so we just do seconds.
Okay. And that's for the fourteenth?
The fourteenth, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll do this one in the meantime then. Resolution zero thirty. Be it resolved, the meeting minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on January ninth, twenty twenty five be accepted and approved as amended. Moved by? Derek? You want to second this one, Leanne?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor? Carried.
Yeah.
So I've got the virtual Leanne, the committee of the whole. Do you want to put down as amended?
I will put.
Cause we, we did just amend it now.
As amended.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You betcha. Okay, we're dealing with the committee of the whole on January fourteenth now. Resolution zero thirty one. Be it resolved that the meeting minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on January fourteenth be accepted and approved as amended with that addition for Leanne attending virtually. Moved by?
Okay.
Okay, Leanne? Seconder? Derek? All in favor? That is carried. I can hear you in the back when you were saying, yeah, so we're good with that, Leanne. I don't know if the others get in the room, but I can hear you here, so we're good.
Okay, perfect. I wasn't sure either.
Yep. Okay. We are on to. Fire Protection Services Report. Ken isn't here, so we have a written report?
Yep. That's his regular report, January twenty first. Okay, it's, uh, pretty much speaks for itself. It's pretty straightforward.
Oh yeah, this was a summary of the year here, it looks like. Fairly busy. Oh yeah, the open house isn't here. I just see at the bottom. Bozeman Fire Hall Open House is now scheduled for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five from seven to nine. I was just gonna ask if that was in there. I missed that when I read it prior, so that is good. That's coming up. Okay, we'll read the resolution if there's no questions on that report. Resolution zero thirty two. Be it resolved that the Fire Protection Services Report dated January twenty one, twenty twenty five be accepted as presented. Moved by? Clint? Seconder? Derek? All in favor?
Yeah.
Carried. I put my hand up too, I guess. Okay. I guess we have a short in camera for the bylaw enforcement services report next. We'll go into camera, read the resolution, go into camera. Won't be long, then we'll be back in here, you guys, okay? Uh, resolution. Yep, resolution zero three three. Be it resolved that pursuant to section one fifty two, three of the municipal act, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue a discussion in camera regarding investigation or enforcement of an act or bylaw. Pursuant to section eighty three, one, paragraph D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting close to the public under subsection one fifty two, three, until the matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section ninety four, one, uh, section H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause eighty three, one, section D. Moved by? Derek?
Okay.
Oh, Leanne?
Whatever.
Leanne, we got you first. Derek is seconding. All in favor? That is carried. Just gonna go into camera here and Trevor's getting that. Is everybody back in? Okay. Uh, resolution to come out of camera, resolution zero thirty four. Be it resolved that pursuant to section one fifty two, subsection four of the municipal act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public. Moved by? Derek? And seconded by Leanne. All in favor? That is carried.
Six thirty nine.
Okay, at six thirty nine, you said, Trevor? Six thirty nine P M. Thank you. Okay. Okay, resolution zero thirty five. Be it resolved that the bylaw enforcement report dated December twenty twenty four? Well, that's end of the year report, right? Be accepted as presented. Mover and a seconder? Clint moved? Leanne seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you.
Can you move that up the bottom a bit closer? Yeah, just slide that up just a little bit closer. And just point it in that direction.
Six point one. Did we have anything that come out of the subdivision application submissions pending or that's?
That's gonna be tabled.
That's tabled, okay. Okay, we had no resolution for that, so just tabled on that. Okay. Public Works and Utilities Report. That's Colin's report. I read the report, Colin. Did you have anything you wanted to add or touch or update or on that report?
Uh, yeah, all the, uh, the repairs were listed in there. Last month, of course, it's just been snow removal. Uh, nothing out of the ordinary too much. And I was kinda keeping you guys updated, but.
Yeah.
Down there with today, so.
Right, the current as of right now, we just got that.
Yeah, so I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Any questions from council in regards to that report? Clint, no? Derek?
Don't think so, no.
Okay, Leanne?
No, I'm good.
Okay, then we'll read the resolution. Uh, zero thirty seven. Be it resolved that the Public Works and Utilities Report dated January twenty first, twenty twenty five be accepted as presented. Moved by? Derek? Seconded by? Clint? All in favor? Leanne? Okay, heard you there. That is carried. Thank you.
Could you move the gavel a mile over? I don't know what the direction might be. I just don't wanna take the risk. No, perfect, thank you. Okay.
Okay, the payables. I come in early today and actually went through the payables, and I don't know if there's any questions regarding it. There was one from the, I just touched on the A M M Trading Company, one three five nine nine. Was a large one there. Unit one, our oldest, oldest grader, Colin, unit one?
Correct.
It got all six new tires put on, so.
Uh, I got one tire put on so far, but all six are ordered.
Are ordered.
When we get caught up, hopefully.
Okay. So that machine will have all new tires on it then?
Uh, it doesn't fit inside their building.
Oh, yeah.
It has to be a warmer day or they have to come here to it, so.
Okay. Thanks, Colin. So yeah, being that was a larger purchase, I just thought I'd talk a bit about that. Another one, C N H Capital, we had some work done on the New Holland tractor here, one three six oh six. Um, that was a turbocharger on Wayne's tractor, a valve bank. And one other idea, our valve.
Felt dress uncovered.
Yes, and a couple solenoids, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so that was another larger one. Any other questions that anybody would be curious in regards to it, to the report? Give you about another minute here to look it over if anything comes to mind. Derek?
I don't see anything here.
Just see you going through it, so I wasn't sure.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to double check, yeah.
Leanne, did you have anything out of that report?
No, I'm, I looked at it on the weekend and there was nothing. Um, looks like everything is up to date and.
Okay.
Wish advertising wasn't so expensive, but.
Mm-hmm. It is, isn't it? Yeah, for sure. Okay, I'll read the resolution. Resolution zero thirty eight. Be it resolved that accounts payable checks one three five nine seven to one three six four two in the amount of a hundred and twenty two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty eight cents with the exclusion of check number one three six two nine in the amount of forty four hundred and forty one dollars and twenty eight cents be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Have a mover and a seconder? Clint moved? Derek seconded? All in favor?
Yeah.
That is carried.
Okay, I'll excuse myself.
Yes, Colin. Thank you. Nope, I was just gonna say, yep, whenever you're ready now, you can go. Thanks for your attendance tonight.
See you, everybody.
Yeah, good night. Okay, next resolution is zero thirty nine. Payroll. Employee payroll. Everybody have a chance to go through the package regarding payroll? Give you a minute or so to browse over it again here if you have, need that opportunity. Did you have anything, Clint?
No.
No, Derek?
No.
Leanne?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Resolution zero thirty nine. Be it resolved that payroll period zero one, twenty twenty five for the period from December first, twenty twenty four to January third, twenty twenty five and in the amount of thirty three thousand, nine hundred and eighty three dollars and sixty one cents be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Moved by?
Okay.
Leanne? Seconded? Clint? All in favor? That is carried. Okay, uh, we are on year to date statement of financial operations, seven point two.
So year to date financial statement is the typical year to date that we do on a monthly basis for utilities and general operating fund. Need questions?
Anybody have anything out of that report? That we have to discuss or need a question answered? Derek?
I'm good.
Clint?
No.
Good, Leanne? Being it's a small group, I'm asking everybody today. It feels kinda weird, but we're working with what we got here, so. Okay, I'll read the resolution then. Resolution zero forty. Be it resolved that year to date statement of financial operations slash general operations dated January first to December thirty first, twenty twenty four be accepted as presented. Further be it resolved that the year to date statement of financial operations slash utilities dated January first to December thirty first, twenty twenty four be accepted as presented and further be it resolved that the account balances report dated December eighteenth, twenty twenty five be accepted as presented. Mover and a second or please? Derek is moving. Yeah, Leanne, would you like to second that? Yeah? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Keep this in a better order here, Trevor. Okay, we are on deficit recovery. Is that right, Trevor?
Uh, yes, the two thousand twenty two financial statements had deficits in the general operating fund in the amount of a hundred and sixty one thousand, three hundred and sixty three dollars. In the Minnetonahs Utility Operating Account, six thousand, three hundred and eighty four dollars. And in the Bozeman Utility Fund, actually correction, my apologies. Bozeman was actually twenty six thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars. I noticed on the information item, the word Minnetonahs is there twice, but actually it's Minnetonahs for six thousand, three eighty four and Bozeman for twenty six thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars. So what we are needing to do per the Ministry of Misrelations and Northern Affairs is we have to draft a letter to them for each of those three stating that we acknowledge that deficit existed in two thousand twenty two. What we are, reasons why, basically that the deficit is there and basically the, what we're gonna be doing to address the deficits. So for the general operating fund, we've incorporated the hundred and sixty one thousand, three hundred and sixty three dollar general operating fund deficit for two thousand twenty two into the actual two thousand twenty five budget. So it's in the actual budget model. It's in the actual budget that we're working on. And that the Minnetonahs and the Bozeman Utility deficits will be basically incorporated and offset utilizing rate rider funds that will be applied for during the fiscal two thousand twenty five. So that's the request we have going forward. The reason why we're putting for resolution is that it's for a municipal ministry of municipal relations requirement that a resolution accompany the letter. So there's three resolutions that are incorporated with this actual approval item. And basically those resolutions will be attached to letters that go to the ministry. So at this stage, we acknowledge, we're getting the actual resolutions completed and then we will draft a letter for the ministry that will go to the Minister of Misrelations and Northern Affairs.
Thanks for that explanation, Trevor. Any questions regarding that? Sounds like, yeah, those numbers will be potentially recovered in the twenty twenty five budget here. Okay, I'll read the resolution then. Zero forty one. That's a little bit longer. Whereas the council of the municipality of Minnetonahs Bozeman acknowledges a fiscal twenty twenty two operating fund deficit in the amount of one sixty, a hundred and sixty one thousand, three hundred and eighty six dollars. And whereas the fiscal twenty twenty two operating fund deficit was primarily the result of transportation services expenses exceeding budget by four hundred thousand, nine hundred and thirty eight dollars due to significant road flooding events. Therefore be it resolved that the council of Minnetonahs Bozeman requests that the Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations approve deficit recovery of a hundred and sixty one thousand, three hundred and eighty six dollars through the use of twenty twenty five mill rate levy protection property taxation. Moved by? Derek? Seconder please? Clint? All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. That is carried. Oh, we have three separate resolutions? Okay, right, okay, that's what I was wondering there, yes.
That was actually drafted by the ministry. That's their process.
Right.
So this is for the actual operating?
This is the operating, yes. Now we get on to the utilities, correct?
Utilities, so each utility will follow, so three resolutions for this.
Okay, now we're dealing with the Minnetonahs Utility Deficit Recovery. Resolution zero forty two. Whereas the council of the municipality of Minnetonahs Bozeman acknowledges a fiscal twenty twenty two Minnetonahs Utility Deficit in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and eighty four dollars. And whereas the fiscal twenty twenty two Minnetonahs Utility Deficit was a result of additional unexpected non-budgeted twenty twenty two Minnetonahs Utility operating expenses. Therefore be it resolved that the council of Minnetonahs Bozeman requests the Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations to approve the deficit recovery of six thousand, three hundred and eighty four dollars through the use of a twenty twenty five rate rider funding. Can I have a mover, please? Derek? Would you like to second that one, Leanne?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Yeah.
That is carried. So that was the Minnetonahs Utility one. Now we move on to the Bozeman Utility. Res, I need a drink of water first, sorry guys. Zero forty three resolution. Whereas the council of the municipality of Minnetonahs Bozeman acknowledges a fiscal twenty twenty two Bozeman Utility Deficit in the amount of twenty six thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars. And whereas the fiscal twenty twenty two Bozeman Utility Deficit was a result of a water fees revenue shortfall of seventeen thousand, four hundred and nine and non-budget, a non-budget funded expenses of ninety five hundred and seventy dollars. Therefore be it resolved that the council of Minnetonahs Bozeman requests the Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations to approve a deficit recovery of twenty six thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars through the use of a twenty twenty five rate rider funding. Moved by? Derek? Seconder? Clint? All in favor? Okay, that is carried. Okay, we're at seven point four. Preliminary operating budget.
So the preliminary operating budget is the draft of the budget. It's still draft, but we're required by the Ministry of Misrelations and Northern Affairs to submit this prior to a regular budget. Now, this was actually per their requirement to be done before the end of December. We're three weeks late, but basically contacted them. They just said, get it in. So basically this reflects the operating budget as per our last meeting, which was the in-camera committee of the whole. So at this stage, it's still draft. There's changes still coming, but the requirement is to provide a preliminary operating budget, but the actual submission of the final budget isn't until, I believe it's in May. So we're, it's just, they wanna know that we're working on it and we definitely are.
Yeah, so we do every year.
Yep.
Okay. I will read the.
Very far ahead this year.
Yep, we're doing, we're doing good, so.
Yes, we are, aren't we, Leanne?
This is first time ever.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything in regards to that? Nope. Okay, I'll read the resolution. Resolution zero forty four. Be it resolved that the twenty twenty five preliminary operating budget be accepted and approved as presented. Mover? Clint moved? Leanne, would you like to second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor? Carried, thanks. Finance report.
Okay, the finance report is our monthly report that we provide to council. And on that report, wherever you're sitting right now, as of January twenty first, the report pretty much speaks for itself and gives an update. We've adjusted a few of the dates for our open houses, but basically no major changes there. And also we are progressing on the bank reconciliations for our two thousand twenty three audit. Currently, we have completed reconciliations January through June, are totally finished, which is excellent progress. And we have all of our reserve accounts also reconciled. So all we have left is basically the remaining six months for the year two thousand twenty three, remaining six months. We do have though, um, the, these are heavier months, so these ones will take a little bit longer because that's where we have the major activity. Also, those are getting into the period where we were trying to basically get our finances set up after we had our closure. So at this stage, it's a little bit more, I expect the progress to slow just because of those situations.
Okay. Do you just wanna maybe state the dates, Trevor, for the folks in the crowd?
Sure.
If you don't mind, just, we have some upcoming meetings that the public can attend and we'd like you to attend, so just give the dates.
So on February eleventh, time to be determined, but it'll be at the Minnetonahs Town Hall. We have our capital budget and five-year capital plan presentation and open house. What that'll basically be is we do a presentation to kind of present what we've got the budget so far. And then we basically have an open house for client, not client, but resident feedback to provide questions they've got, answer questions they have. Council can engage in questions as well. If we have a larger turnout, it'll probably be like one minute for a question, then three minutes for answer, which will enable time for different counselors as well as myself to answer those questions. If it's a smaller one, like our last public hearing for our budget, we had only five people, that kind of. That kind of turned into just an informal conversation among everybody where people were asking questions back and forth. So if it's just a small group, we'll adapt to a format to allow more engagement. For February thirteenth, we have our operating budget presentation, which is the same format. It'll start off with the presentation of our operating budget, as that'll be the draft operating budget, of course. These are all draft because we haven't gone to first reading yet. But basically, again, they're draft because we want the input feedback from the public before we actually go into a more formal or finalized version. But February thirteenth will be operating budget presentation, open house. February twentieth, we'll have our mill rate special assessment tax levy presentation. Now this one's going to be different because historically we've had Minnetonahs, Bozeman, as well as Rural, and then at-large. However, we have now passed from twenty-four to twenty-five, which is where we're legally required by the Ministry of Municipal Relations to go to an at-large. So there'll be no longer a regular levy for Minnetonahs or for Bozeman or for Rural, it'll be an at-large. But what we're actually doing is introducing two special levies. Well, special levies under consideration by council. Basically those are for the transport, garbage collection as well as the recycling. So we'll be talking about that in those meetings as well. And then April tenth will be our financial plan public hearing, which is just what's required prior to us submitting the budget to the government. So that'll be the regular public hearing that we have for the budget every year, same format there. So February eleventh, thirteenth, twentieth, and April tenth.
Thanks, Trevor, for just going over that again. Okay. Yes, Clint, sorry.
Are these be advertised anywhere else?
They will be, actually, so we'll put them on our website. Basically, we will put them on to Facebook as well. If council wishes to, we can put mail drop boxes or on the start times, however costs will, will go up for that. So if council wishes to do that, we can do that. But we could also go into Valley Biz as well, so that again would be a cost. So if council wishes to incur those costs, we can add that to it. But the website and Facebook, of course, is no charge for that.
And I think we should maybe just put them on our sign out there, that thing is, was well noticed by whatever's up on that, so.
And I did talk to Brownie, she has no problem with the post office posting.
Posting a notice?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's good, yeah, a lot of traffic goes in and out of those doors, so make sure we do that too then, so. Okay, any other questions, Derek or Leanne, regarding what's coming up here for us? And the public as well?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, no.
Okay, good, thanks then. Okay, resolution zero forty-five. Be it resolved, the finance report dated January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented. Mover? Derek?
Yeah.
And Leanne, seconded, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, we're on to section eight point one here, January G four slash G eight meeting.
So the, this resolution in a nutshell, we had originally, or council had originally discussed the idea of, or we're investigating or considering the idea of having, where we'd have a harm reduction strategy, public open house. Basically, the public could actually come in and engage. However, there was concerns, some of the councils, as well as just concerns and questions that basically, some questions may be raised saying, Public Health Ministry, what are we doing? And those questions may come up, but we not, may not be able to actually answer those questions. And that was the main concern on that one. So what this resolution does is it basically says that this meeting will, instead of being a harm reduction strategy or harm reduction strategy, collateral impact on community discussion, it'll just go back to our regular G eight, G four meeting format. And we'll be scheduling that during the month of February with, upon consultation with other municipalities, to see what their availability is. So what we're doing at that meeting is just going back to our regular G eight, G four format. However, because the last one was done through a resolution, we need a resolution, so we can go back to our G eight, G four format.
Okay. Any questions regarding that? Nope. Okay, resolution zero forty-six. Be it resolved that the Municipality of Minnetonahs Bozeman schedule the January twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five G eight, G four meeting during February of two thousand twenty-five with a regular G eight, G four meeting agenda format. Move by. Clint?
Yeah.
Seconded by Leanne. All in favor? Yep, carried, thank you. We're on to eight point two, the monthly administration report.
The administration report is pretty straightforward, discuss the G eight, G four, which we just talked about. Talks about also strategic plan development, which we're progressing through, bylaws. As people who have been watching our meetings know that we've got a lot of bylaws that gone through first and second reading. So we're progressing through the bylaws that we committed to as far as review. And the one thing we have done is in the facilities, with the cost of the actual infrastructure and facilities, we are basically going to be narrowing down the scope of our facility's security. And basically, instead of rolling out to all facilities, capital cost on those, we're basically just going to be focusing on what we have right now. And again, reminder, not in facility security, but basically reminder, February fifth, as previously communicated on our website and previously communicated in our, on Facebook, we will be reopening the Bozeman office. So the Bozeman office was closed, we have a staff member that basically had resigned. We've since had two new staff members start, we've gone through some significant training, and that Bozeman office will be opened on February fifth, which I think is a good news thing, was closed, but not for that long.
Okay, thanks for that, Trevor. Any questions from council in regards to the report? Derek? Leanne?
No, good news, yep.
Yeah, a lot of good news there going outside, it's good. Okay, resolution zero forty-seven. Be it resolved that the administration report dated January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Derek?
Yeah.
And Leanne, seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Carried, thanks. Nine point one. This is the dog and cat bylaw, correct?
That is correct, so we are on second reading. During the last council meeting, there was a very good discussion on this bylaw. Everything in that bylaw has been incorporated. So council, this was forwarded for rereading. And are there any other changes that council wishes to make in regards to this bylaw?
All the changes were implemented from last meeting in here, eh, Trevor?
All changes, right.
Okay. And just, yeah, if you've got some stuff you want to compare or ask, Clint?
Yeah, I do.
You go ahead.
Third and whereas, under the letter I on the front page, says creating, creating offenses, didn't quite understand what that meant.
So it's the, you have the where, and whereas, and whereas, so the third one?
Third and where, yeah.
Well, second one, yeah.
Then A B and then the, the letter in red.
That's a good question. So these are from the municipal act, so let me take this as a way and just check on that one. But this is the verbiage that came straight from their act, it was in our bylaw before. So it's not, we haven't written it, we just basically brought it forward, but I do not have an answer at this time, but I'll take that as a takeaway.
Okay, well, sir, I'll circle that in mine here too, Clint.
Definitions, number two definitions. Close to C, and then down to the three, number three, eyes.
It does not adopt dogs or cats, that part there, Clint?
Yeah, unless the dog or cat is spayed or neutered at the time of adoption. Or if the dog or cat is under age of five months.
Just above that. Here? There.
So animal rescue organizations. So animal rescue organizations, when they take an animal and that animal is put up for adoption, basically before you can adopt your, your dog or cat from the animal rescue organization, that animal is spayed or neutered.
Seems like there's a word missing in there or something, just put that up in my mind.
So let's go over that together here, maybe?
It does not allow, it does not adopt.
Does not adopt, it does not adopt dogs or cats.
That's referring to the animal rescue organization, but it's like it should not allow, or?
How about, does not adopt out dog or sar cats, or does not allow the adoption of cats? Dogs or cats?
That's clear in my mind, isn't it? It does not allow the adoption of dogs or cats, and then going on to what she said, unless the dog or cat is spayed or neutered at the time of adoption, or if the adopted dog or cat is under the age of four months. Only adopts a dog or cat on the condition that the adopters spayed or neutered it when it reaches age four months and is actively enforcing that condition.
So we could, it does not adopt out or does not allow the adoption of, is there a preference?
It does not allow the adoption of, I think sounds very clear, doesn't it?
Okay, this is the second reading.
This is second, we have a record, a third reading, a recorded third reading, third and final. So we got another, another kick at her yet for sure at least, so. And if you have anything, Leanne, at your end, just say something, okay?
Yeah, for sure, I actually, I wouldn't mind, like I think I have the very original document from a couple of months ago that Trevor had given us.
Okay.
Has anything been changed with the last meeting that I wasn't able to be at for this particular bylaw? Or is this the first kind of like changes that we're doing now?
Nope, this is the second round.
Second round, I have my original one at home with all my circles, but I didn't bring it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, there is some changes already.
Okay, yeah, just, I, I don't know what those changes were, sorry.
Okay.
Just wouldn't mind an updated copy by paper if that would be possible.
The one, the agenda is the actual updated version, so like this one, what we have on the agenda is actually the one that incorporates all that feedback.
That's the latest version now, yeah. I guess what I could do is I have my corrections on my working copy, I could, you could take a look at that, Leanne, I could leave that with you and you could see what the changes are then, if that would help you, would that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's do that then, sure. Clint, I see you have, or you're doing some, just take your time, there's no rush on her, so.
Slid dog, six point four. Six point four point three.
Okay.
Letter C. Proof that the sled dogs will be used solely for the sport of sled, of dog sledding. How, how would that be proved?
Six point four point three, and then those three letters there, Clint, it's in, okay?
The letter C.
Okay.
That's a good question, we could take that out or we could add a verbiage in there to indicate how it's going to be determined. But at this stage, the current wording just says it's the requirement, but how we determine that requirement is not touched on in the bylaw.
I personally don't think it needs to be in there.
Would council like to have that six point four point three point C removed?
Yeah, it really, I don't see a need for it either myself, reading it out here.
Can you read it out loud one more time?
So, sub clause six point four point three point C. The clause says, each request presented to council must include, C, proof that the sled dogs will be used solely for the sport of dog sledding. So what we've done is in the section, which is basically covering sled dogs, in a situation where an individual has to prove to council, this requirement is that they have to prove to council that basically these dogs, or dog, is a sled dog. What we're proposing is that this sub clause be removed, the six point four point three C.
Okay.
Yeah, just C, because yeah, the proof that the sled dogs will only be used for dog sledding.
Okay, yeah.
And that's to do with the sled dog license. So if you go to six point four point one, every person who keeps or harbors sled dogs shall annually obtain a sled dog license for the municipality, subject to authorization by council and according to the clause six point four point two, and pay the required fee as set forth in bylaw zero eight two two, two zero two four. So we have a fee in there for sled dogs, so this would be basically falling in the area of breeders. So each initial request for a sled dog license shall be presented to council for authorization. And if granted such authorization shall continue until license is not renewed or revoked or location where the sled dogs are kept is changed. So this six point four point three is basically saying that it's a continuation. Each request presented to council must include proof that the sled dogs will be used solely for the sport of dog sledding. So I think the question is that you've got a dog, a sled dog, but in the summertime, they're not sled dogging. So maybe there's a situation where there may be difficulty for a person who does have a sled dog team saying that basically these dogs are just for this purpose. And it's, it's a fair point, like, do we have a picture of them every year hooked up to a sled in a race? Or how do we do that, and do we want to get involved in that either? So the inquiry is that maybe six point four point three point C should be removed.
Yeah, I would think it could go, go out there. As long as we have the other information like where they are, just so it doesn't violate zoning or anything like that and conflicting with surrounding properties that it might create a problem with. Yeah, for them to prove that this dogs are for dog sledding only isn't a big thing in my mind, I don't think.
No, I'm not approving.
No, not point C.
The, and this section is basically where if you have a dead sled, sorry, a sled dog team, you can keep up to a maximum of fifteen dogs, whereas basically if you don't, you're restricted to the two. So that's the key thing. If you've got fifteen dogs in a yard, basically, are these sled dogs, basically, that's where this section comes in too. Because of course, if you're doing a dead sled dog team, you're going to need more than two dogs, so that's where this comes from.
That was another question I had, why the fifteen? Because the average sled dog guy, he can have twenty dogs, some of the big guys are up to sixty dogs. So why is the number fifteen set at that limit?
Because I basically did some pictures of sled dogs and it looked like they had fifteen tons too, because they even get tired. So we could put whatever you want in there.
I don't even know if I have a number there, because I checked into it and I asked questions with the guy, he said that, that number can vary.
It can vary?
And another question, how many sled dog owners do we have in the, in our municipal?
I'm not sure how many we could.
Just one, I know of.
Just one, Leanne?
Well, just one, right, you know, just on the end of Bozeman, but there could be more that I'm just not aware of, but the one for sure.
So one I know of, too, yeah.
We could put this amount for whatever you want, it's, again, we're second reading, so this can be changed. We could go twenty or twenty-five or keep it at fifteen, what is council's preference?
I'm going to put that as a takeaway in mind, to give it some thought here.
Yeah, me too.
Dog numbers.
Because with the person that we have, I mean, just to do with where he lives, you know, if he had sixty dogs, that would be a big issue. you know, if he had sixty dogs, that would be a big issue.
Mm-hmm.
Is it in?
Just because he's basically right in town, right? Like it's, yeah.
In town or in the municipality?
He is.
He's in town.
He's in town limits, Leanne?
You bet.
Okay. Okay.
So this is for town limits?
And that's why he has a cattle permit.
Right.
So this bylaws just for the town limits, not the municipality?
I'd have to check to see the, what the clause says. I believe it's for the municipality, but let me check.
It's in town, town limits, I think, isn't it? Isn't that how we drew out the boundaries for Bozeman and Minnetonka's limits?
Yeah, I just want to see if that changes in there.
I don't know if I did, I didn't see that in there, I was scared.
Yeah, we have this clause that was added in by council, I believe during a previous reading.
Yeah, D and I, I think Clint, we kind of specified the limits according to the municipal maps, the drawing numbers.
So this was a count, these limits were actually from council. So with the idea that these are now within the Bozeman and municipality limits, maybe fifteen dogs would be appropriate, or maybe we want to go smaller? Is there any, are we still good with that? Or you want to take that away and go in my direction?
Still, I'd take it for a takeaway for now.
That's right. Clint, you know a little bit about this stuff more than I do, obviously. What does a team consist of, or it can vary? Just so I can get my thoughts wrapped around, like if he needs.
Sled dog owner has more than just what he has hooked up.
Right.
So he may have five dogs at home and have twelve, or fifteen on the.
Cause I was thinking like if he had two trained teams kind of, maybe two different lead dogs or whatever, like what would those numbers look at perhaps?
Or two teams.
Or two teams, yeah. So what was a typical team be, I guess Clint? Is it like?
I'll check into it again, but like I said, I did make some phone calls.
Okay. If you could get back to me or us on that, that would be good. Cause then it'll help me make my decision, how many dogs can we allow? You know, cause I'm green as, yeah. Cause they come on this here as far as numbers of dogs to run a decent team.
And that's going to be within town limits too, so you're also balancing. If you've got sixty barking dogs in your town of Minnetonka, that could cause a phone call too, so.
If I had to make a decision right now, I'd say kind of probably two full teams and a few spares, but that's right now, you know, it's my thoughts. Okay, we'll get some more info on that thing then, on that part.
That's a council takeaway?
Yes.
Okay. You were still going through a little bit there Clint? I'm not rushing you, but just, we're good? Yeah, and we do have a third reading yet and we can take, you know, as much time as we need to do it. Leanne?
Yeah.
I'll get you my working copy so you can see the comparison then.
That'd be great, thanks.
Okay, and Derek? Derek is good. Okay, we will do the second reading then, move on with that. Resolution zero forty-eight. Be it resolved that bylaw zero nine dash twenty-twenty-five being a bylaw regarding dogs and cats, be given second reading. Move by. Derek? Seconder? Clint? All in favor?
Yeah.
Carried. Just noticing this letter from the Sunflower daycare here. Do I need a resolution for anything, or is that just for information purposes?
That was for the in camera, which is.
Oh, that's coming up then?
Yeah, so it's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda, okay? Okay, that's it for the regular part of the meeting then? Do we want to do announce, oh yeah, we'll do announcements first then, yes, while the folks are here yet. Uh, I'm going to start with Derek then, I guess. Did you have any announcements, meetings attended that?
No, we've got a meeting coming up, but nothing.
Nothing happened in the last two weeks then, or between regular council meetings?
Nothing in the last two weeks, no.
Okay, Clint?
Nothing.
You guys must have good committees. Leanne?
Just a rise committee, rise committee meeting was scheduled for yesterday, last night, and it was postponed due to the cold weather.
Okay, thank you. Trevor?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, I had a meeting here, sat in for Reeve Larry for, I'm not even sure of the proper name, physician recruitment and retention or something like that now. Used to be doctor recruitment. So I sat in for Larry the other day, was held in the chambers in Swan. Three new physicians are coming to Swan here in the fall. Three ladies, two have had training in mental health slash addictions background. So that might be a good, a good help for us here being we do have a real problem with those types of things in the valley. They've given a four-year commitment, they're coming in September. February seventh to ninth, they're having a seminar in Swan, which is called Rig Rural Interest Group. And they're trying to get about twenty students to come to the valley and medical students and see what the valley's all about here and kind of show them some, or have them engaged doing different things. And actually, dog sledding was one of the things they did, want to get them on some dog sleds down at the museum there and have that as part of it. Going to a hockey game, a couple other different outside events. So they're trying to showcase the valley here and hopefully get, you know, some people to want to stay here in Swan. They do have a couple other retreats planned, not necessarily in Swan here, but there's a family medicine retreat in Brandon this year. That's a big thing that the medical group does attend and send people from here to partake in. It's kind of like a job fair. And then they have an April twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth meeting. It's called the Society for Rural Physicians and our group from Swan here does attend that too. So first one I went to, I found it quite interesting. They are trying hard here, our local group of Dwayne White and Dave Moreo and then those guys are trying to, you know, recruit and keep and really work hard towards medicine and that in the valley here. So that was the one meeting that I had. Second one was, I went to the watershed meeting last Thursday, I believe it was. We had elections. We do have Reeve Larry's on the watershed, Leanne Hutman's on, I'm on, and Ken Reader is on for sub district members. So that has all been established and next meeting will be about in six weeks' time. So that's what I had to report on. And yeah, just the two meetings, I guess. Okay, folks, I guess we're going to be going into camera one more time, so we won't pass any more resolutions after that. And thanks for coming.
You have to read the resolution.
Oh, I got to read the resolution, sorry Trevor.
It's okay.
Resolution zero forty-nine. Be it resolved that pursuant to section one fifty-two, three of the Municipal Act, despite subsections one and two, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting with discussion in public would prejudice the municipality of Minnetonka Bozeman's ability to carry out its activities and negotiations pursuant to section eighty-three, section one, paragraph D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection one fifty-two, section three, until the matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section ninety-four, section one, paragraph H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause eighty-three, one, paragraph D. Could I have a mover and a seconder to go into camera? Clint? I see Leanne?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? That is carried. Resolution zero fifty. Be it resolved that pursuant to section one fifty-two, four of the Municipal Act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at nine P M. Move by. Derek? Seconded by Clint? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the motion to adjourn. Resolution zero fifty-one. Be it resolved at this regular meeting of council, be adjourned at?
Nine o'clock.
Nine P M. Move by, Leanne, and seconded by?
Clint.
Clint. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you.
We're adjourned?
We're adjourned.